I would like to go ahead and welcome you to the May 4th work session of the Buffalo Department of Education. We're looking forward to having a robust discussion tonight. And with that, with my welcome, I'd like to hand it over to Chair Woods of Finance and Ops.
Well, welcome this evening. Today, our topic is the 22-23 school budget. And we have good news, great news, that the 2022-23 general fund budget is increasing by $47.6 million. It's going from 97, 9, 90, 972.5 million to 1.02 billion. To, we need to thank Majority Leader Chris Stowe-People Stokes and Senator Kennedy for the increases in foundation aid, almost $33 million increase. And we also need to thank President Biden and U.S. Congressman Higgins for the increase in federal aid, the American Rescue Act funds of 289 million, which are being used to improve and extend education, to address learning loss due to COVID. And we just have a remarkable operation, amazing opportunity to innovate and remake urban education. I sent about 20, 30 questions to, to our CFO Jeff Pritchard, and I thank him for a number of answers. The board should be aware there's some significant increases in staffing to support our students. And that there is also, this budget includes funding for bus aids. It increases culturally relevant funding, and it increases English language arts funding. So I just want to thank the superintendent, our CFO Jeff Pritchard, and his number two man Jeff Barnes for answering my questions. And I will now turn this over to our superintendent for her opening remarks. And I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman Woods. Greetings to everyone, our distinguished board members, cabinet members, and any of our general public that may be online. Much of what I'll say will sound like an echo, but I really do truly appreciate, you know, all of the diligence and the hard work that our chief financial officer, Mr. Jeffrey Pritchard, has put into, you know, developing this budget. He's very well respected for his level of expertise and transparency. And you're absolutely right, his number two, his deputy, Mr. Jim Barnes, has worked very closely with him in helping to develop this. I must also say that I really want to thank you, Chairwoman Woods, for all of your diligence and monitoring. And we certainly did receive all of your questions. And I hope that, you know, they were responded to in ways that helped to clarify, you know, any concerns or questions that you had. You know, developing a budget is not an easy task. It really is almost a year-long tax, task that happens. And with us being the second largest district in New York State, there's quite a bit of work that goes into developing a budget. So I want to thank you, and I certainly want to thank all of the board members who I know have been scrutinizing and taking a look at all of the documents that were sent. Because at the end of the day, in the words of Ms. Bolton-Cotman, "The end of the day, we want to make sure that things like equity and access and opportunity are afforded to all of our children, and especially our most needy populations." So, you know, I'm pleased to say that with this budget and the increases that we received from our Congressman Higgins and from our New York State Majority Leader People Stokes and our Senator Kennedy and the entire Western New York delegation, we will be able to afford much more access and opportunity for our children. So I'm very excited about the budget. I look forward to some of the questions and rigorous discussion that may happen. And let's go, Jim Barnes.
Okay, thank you. Admiral, thank you, Superintendent, and good evening, board members. So what I'm going to do tonight in this brief presentation is to provide an overview of the data distributed on Friday and contained in what we call the draft budget book and the draft school-based budgets. The focus tonight is on moving the general fund budget further toward approval on May 18. There's a lot of excitement over the ESAR funds, but the focus tonight is really on the general fund. Admiral, first slide, please. I want to start out with just a review of the budget timeline. What we've done in April, we completed the four-year plan approved by the board and submitted to the Buffalo Fiscal Stability Authority back in April 20. And then just last Friday, we submitted a draft budget book and a draft school-based budgets to the board for their review and consideration. The agenda for this month, superintendent, it'll culminate with the superintendent's proposed budget to be submitted to the board. And we're shooting to get that out maybe next Thursday, after answering all the questions, getting further input from the superintendent and the board. Tonight, we're at a Finance and Operations Committee, again, where the purpose is to review the documents sent to you regarding the general fund. There's another Finance and Ops Committee next week. And we, our ultimate goal is to get the budget, the general fund budget approved by the board on May 18. What would be a huge help for us is something regarding the timing of follow-up questions. We answered two sets of questions submitted by Board Member Woods. And Board Member Woods, thank you for submitting those questions very quickly and in an efficient manner. We hope we answered them fully. And thanks for the time this afternoon to talk a little. So what would be very helpful for us is to get questions or topics for discussion received in writing by Friday, May 6, and we will respond in writing prior to the May 11 committee meeting. For anything that develops after that or was missed, if we could receive any additional questions by a week from Friday, we will give you a written response by Tuesday, May 17. Again, because of the size of the budget, the size of the budget, this is the most efficient way for us to process all your questions and get you the responses you need. Admiral, the next slide. So a quick overview of the information contained in the two handouts from Friday. First of all, our draft general fund budget. Our adopted budget in the current year was 943,000, 943 million in revenues and 972.5 in expenditures. We budgeted the use of $29 million in reserves to close that gap. The document that you received on Friday called our draft proposed budget called for revenues of 985.5 million. And for the first time, we crossed the billion-dollar mark. And this is a hard number to say, $1,200,000,000 in expenditures. And we plan on using $34.6 million from reserves to cover that gap. Year-over-year changes in revenues, revenues are up $42 million. We'll talk a little bit about more, more about that in the next slide. They're up 4.5%. Our expenditures are increasing 47.6 million, or 4.9%. We are planning on using quite a bit more of fund balance to close the gap. Second, and this I know will be the focus of a lot of your questions, but I hope this information really sets the tone for our answers and for what we're expecting next year. Point two on this slide, the school budget staff, FTEs, 4,650 in the 2021 year, they increased by 69 to 4,719 in the current year. The proposed budget and the school-based budget documents that you received on Friday call for an increase of 172 FTEs to 4,891. This includes FTEs in all funding sources, the general fund, grants, food service, and the ESAR funding, but it shows an increase of 172 FTEs. Admiral, take it to the next slide. This next slide, a lot of the focus is on the ESAR funding and all the opportunities that will provide us. But just as importantly, from the district standpoint, and maybe more importantly, from a long-term perspective, the state budget includes the full funding of the foundation aid formula. So we broke down, in this chart, we broke down the state aid, the amount of revenues we received from state aid, 843.7 million, up $33 million from the prior year. Foundation aid, that's the big one to look at. If you go to the far right, the change from the current year to what we're proposing in next year's budget is $32.9 million. That is the result of the state, step two in their move toward fully funding foundation aid. There'll be one more adjustment the year after next. That's the driver for our long-term revenues. The other revenue lines, including charter school transitional transportation, special services, building aid, those are expenditure-based aids. So they move according to how much we spent in the prior year. You'll notice a couple of these have gone down, special services aid, that's largely related to CTE attendance and some other factors. And then public high cost and private high cost, those are related to sped counts and the dollars that we spend to service those. Those decrease, so our aid A quick note, if anyone's interested, on all the other, the 15 to 17 million dollar last line, that also includes expenditure type aid for the most part for hardware and technology, software, library materials, textbooks, and some other items. But the biggest thing to note there, which the best news and the biggest driver of our revenue increase next year is that fully funded foundation aid. Admiral, next slide, please. Now quickly, this is a recap of the biggest expenditure trends, again, pulled from the documents distributed last Friday. It's great news that our foundation aid is going up so much. But on the expenditure side, charter school tuition is going up by $10.3 million next year. What causes that? The pupil counts. Our budget next year calls for 10,839 charter school students. That's 25% of the overall Buffalo school-aged children. It's up 1,100 from the 21-22 original budget. It's up 508 from the current year revised budget. And it's up 754 from the most recent charter student count. Those pupils multiplied by the charter school tuition rate are causing, will result in a $10.3 million increase next year from the current year revised budget. Second item that you'll, that you'll see in these expenditure reports, this is shown under the plant functions and object codes. Utilities are expected to go up 3.7 million from the current year. It's something we're all experiencing personally. Well, it's on a bigger scale with district our size. Another item you'll see, transportation-related expenditures, they're down 7.1 million from the current year's budget. The reasons? 460 routes were budgeted. That's down from 630 pre-COVID. That's what drives our contract buses. So that's the main reason for the decrease in anticipated expenditures. Bus aids, they're up 1.8 million. We budgeted at least one per bus route. And transportation also incorporates some fuel costs. Those are expected to increase $2.1 million. Probably the biggest new item for everyone to be aware of that's in this budget, in our contingency lines contained within the reports distributed on Friday, there's a $26.2 million contingent expense that, for our projected settlement of outstanding labor contracts. We built that total number in, hoping for a settlement. And upon settlement, we will allocate all of that money out to the various teacher, VCSA, et cetera lines. Another note, another item to note is after-school program programming. You'll see a 3.7, 3.7 million negative variance from our 2021 budget. And that's because we're including those costs. We've shifted them over to the ESAR funding for '22 and '23. That is also to note, when we talk about ESAR funding in depth in future meetings, that's an item that has to come back to the general fund when ESAR is done. That's just something to note. Admiral, the next slide? The next slide is something you, you've seen numerous times, and it's a, it's a foundational issue that board and the district is going to have to deal with. The first one shows the cumulative change in pupil counts, district versus charter. The gray bar shows the total school-aged children in Buffalo. You see like a thousand decrease over the past years. But the red line is the district enrollment, almost a 5,000 student decrease. The blue line are charter students. They're up almost 3,500 kids. And we touched on the year-over-year change and its impact on our budget earlier in this presentation. So while the overall Buffalo school-aged population isn't changing much, it's, they're shifting from Buffalo schools to the charters. The second table is K through beds enrollment versus our general fund FTEs, the long-term trends. The orange or red line, depending on what monitor you're looking at, that's our total beds excluding pre-K. Again, it's been dropping. And where I think in the current year was 28,900. The budget of FTEs is the blue or gray line. That's going in the opposite direction. And the, the red appendage at the top of the FTE line is budgeted FTEs with the additional staffing that will fund through ESAR. So this district has been providing the resource to address our student population and their needs. And this chart shows it. And that's an issue that we have to deal with. How do we staff when our enrollment case travels? Admiral, the next slide, please. That first checkpoint that you say median for long-range foundation issues, the second one is a, is a more immediate concern. This is our historical staffing and vacancy chart. The first table to the left is our total FTEs for the general fund. You see the orange line, that's our revised budget. And the gray line is the actual. We were currently measuring that we have 180 vacancies in the general fund. On the right-hand side, this is total FTEs with all funds, general, grants, ESAR. Here, the orange line again is the revised budget, and the gray line is the actual. You'll see that represents about 390 vacancies. Now, part of that is because we just put FTEs into the ESAR funds, and we have yet to hire all those positions. So that's an immediate concern. I saw an email from Board Member Woods. I know we have some work to do on getting you vacancy counts by school. The Budget Department has engaged with HR, and we're very optimistic of working with them to get you more granular data on this issue. And I think Tammy and her team, the first meeting we had was just excellent. Admiral? The next slide, yeah, thanks. So I've covered the overview of the general fund. This last slide is to just touch on the ESAR federal funds, because we cannot ignore them. Everyone's talking about them. It's very exciting. But the general fund budget process, which is our focus right now, is separate from the SR2 and SR3 budget processes, although components of SR2 and SR3 are in the school-based budgets. New York State Ed, we've got approved budgets for SR2 and SR3, and you've previously been provided links to those documents. Both of those projects will have their own amended process, again, separate from the general fund. Of note, SR2 expires September 30 of 2023, and SR3 expires September 30 of 2024. God bless you. The next point on this, certain large items that are anticipated to be amended into SR2 and SR3, approximately $2.3 million of additional nursing costs, nursing contract costs, 13.2 million in security-related costs, equipment and staffing, and $4 million in school-based budget requests. So we have approved budgets. We know we're going to be amending or repurposing those original budgets in the coming weeks. And the process of amending those two grants will begin at the conclusion of the general fund. It's important that we stay focused on getting this general fund wrapped up and approved on May 18. We are going to be convening a working group to analyze the recommended changes that already have been submitted. And a public process will certainly follow. That'll be a large undertaking. It's begun, a lot of the groundwork started already, but it'll be taken up again in earnest after the general fund. Admiral, it's the last slide, I believe. So with that, I thank you very much for your time. And Board Member Woods, thank you for submitting those questions. I hope our answers are satisfactory and can move this process along. And again, it'd be very helpful for us if any additional questions or comments could be submitted in writing, and we'll get them right back to you in writing. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, for your excellent presentation, summary, and detail. I'm not sure if the board members of, okay, I'm not sure if the board members got to read the answers to the different questions. There were a lot of them. But I do see that we have board members, Sharon Bolton-Cotman's hand up, and then we have Larry Scott's hand up. So I will recognize Ms. Bolton-Cotman and then Mr. Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burns, for your presentation. I appreciate you. You've been consistently beautiful over the years, and you're always there to help. I appreciate you. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, okay? And so first, I have a statement to say in regard to charter schools, that as a result of us not opening our buildings last year, this is the effect, this is the cost. We have lost children. Parents had to, of course, have a place for their children to go to school, and they chose charter school options, not because they are a better fit, because they were more convenient. Our intent is to get those children back in a big way. I started having conversations today, Madam President, Madam Superintendent, I will be talking to you about those ideas that I've been generating. I want to ask a question because I'm concerned about the community involvement piece in this budget. I don't know if there was money put aside for community engagement, but I have been clear to say that we're not going to turn this district around without doing some grassroots approach to this. And I need to make sure that that's understood and as we move forward. I'm concerned about the public process. I don't know, you know, what your plans are in regards to that, but in previous years, or administrations, I should say, prior to the previous one, the board was well aware of every line on the, the board members who were concerned, let's put it like that, attended sessions, and they were made aware of every step through the process in a more concise way than what we've had of late. And as a result, I have a statement that I have something that I need to say. My concern is that when Mr. Barnes said that there were currently 180 vacancies for the general fund, I first of all, would like to know how much money that is before, if we can have that dollar amount. But the real issue here is, is that where is the equity? Where's the equity solution in having vacant seats or vacant positions inside the schools? And the schools, each school, based on their budget, receiving what they should receive? So in other words, for whatever reason, we have not filled the positions. The principal school-based management team has put together what they felt was a working plan, and this, these positions were needed for them to move the school to the next level. It did not happen. Every year, it does not happen. And the money goes back to the general fund without a conversation of equity. So for the schools that have had a difficult time filling positions, which are consistently certain schools every year because of things, how things are set up, where is the equity solution here? How is it that money goes back to the general fund? Some schools get all of their staff. Some schools don't get all of theirs, but yet they're treated as equal. Where's the solution to make sure that children receive the supports that they need? This is what equity is about, okay? And so we have to either on this board, put in a policy that changes things, or there has to be something put in place immediately to make sure that children in these schools are receiving some sort of support when staff is not available. It's not equitable. And that, and that's a major concern for me in how this budget. Personally, I feel that if one of my, if a school did not receive the staff, that that money should go in this year, in the next year's budget to provide additional support. Why is the money returned back and nothing is done in return for those students? That's, that has to stop if we're talking about equity. It has to stop. And so that's the challenge that we have. And I would like for us to address that challenge this year in moving forward, because it's not fair that certain schools don't have staff, certain schools do, and the money goes back to the general fund, and the children don't receive the resources. We have to look at that in a more equitable way, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. And I don't disagree with that. I know that this year, with us getting at least the ESAR funds, I believe, and Mr. Burns, you correct me if I'm wrong, but every request that we received for school-based staffing, we were able to accommodate all requests that were received for school-based staffing. So if a school put in last year for two counselors but didn't, wasn't able to fill the two positions, and so this year, when they built their budget, they said, well, we need three counselors now, we were able to accommodate. So it's not rolling back in the way that I think you're mentioning into the general fund, but the staffing piece would be accommodated. The staffing piece would be accommodated.
Well, the resource piece, because everything does not equal staffing, okay? And so if you weren't, for example, able to come up with a Spanish teacher, okay, in a school, and the kids ended up with a substitute Spanish teacher, then additional resources could have been brought in to, to then additional resources could have been brought in to supplement those children. It could have been either something viral, something, or something, videos or whatever. But what's not happening is, is that the children are not getting what they're supposed to get. So I'm glad you were able, but we still, he still noted 180 vacancies currently in the general funds. And in the past years, that's been the equivalent to $11 million, $14 million, okay? So it's very good to have a piggy bank every year coming back to us, but at the end of the day, the students are not getting the resources that they should. And he also noted 390 vacancies, which I'm assuming includes that 180, if I, I hope I'm listening right on that.
Yes.
So that equals money, and that equals resources for the students. And it's not happening in certain schools. And I have a major concern. I spoke to Chairperson Woods about this, because she has a sense of knowledge in budgeting about some possible ideas on how we could move forward with this. But this can't continue. This returning money back to the general fund and not providing children with resources, it's just, it's not working. It's just really not. Thank you.
Thank you, duly noted.
I just want to say that we did discuss that if the same schools are going to repeatedly be penalized year after year, and they're the ones, because the teachers have the right to choose where they want to go, so the teachers choose the less difficult schools. So if they cannot get a math teacher, they cannot get a science teacher, then if we can have a policy of a budget amendment where the principal can request some other resources, that they actually get some kind of additional staffing support to the, in their school, that might be a possible, at least mitigation of this situation.
Thank you.
We'll get that. We have Larry Scott, and then we have Ann Rivera.
Thank you, Chairwoman Woods. So a couple of things. First of all, Ms. Woods, I think your opening remarks generally reflect my sentiment on the budget. Overall, I like what I see. It looks like, if I read it correctly, that there's a slight increase from, in reading teachers, from the increase that we also included in our, of the budget last year that we approved. So I'm happy to see that. Specifically related to the budget, last year, we also reinstated the day treatment program through Western New York Children's Psychiatric Center. And I just want to be sure that that is in the budget, and whether there's going to be any growth in that day treatment program.
So it's not my understanding that there will be growth in the day treatment program, but it is my understanding that it will continue.
Okay. And then my other question, I sent an email to staff today and to you, Dr. Williams, about after-school programming for next year. We know that we finally have launched after-school programs for elementary without transportation included right now. What right now is our plan for after-school programming entering next school year? And is that in the bud, well, what's our plan, and then how is it reflected in the budget?
So is Ann Botticelli on?
Carrie?
Yes.
Okay, yes, after-school is coming out of the ELP funding, as is, day treatment is also definitely funded, Mr. Scott. But we have to discuss what after-school will look like in terms of transportation, but the funding itself is in the budget.
So at this point, it's not determined that we're going to have after-school programming like we had pre-COVID?
We're going to need to sit with the Transportation Department and get their projections for the coming year. We have budgeted for the ELP after-school program. So that point, that part of it is available. It's a question of whether transportation can meet the needs of the program, or whether we have to consider alternatives the way we did this year.
And when you say we've budgeted for those programs, does that include the potential for transportation?
I would actually defer to Jim on that one, but I believe so.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so. So I would suggest that at some point, if it is in the budget, that we reconvene the after-school task force, which I thought was very productive. It helped in getting programming launched before this school year ended. And I think it would be wise of us to do that again with all the stakeholders that have been included, to talk about what we can do for next year, and whether, and if we have to alter plans as well.
Yes, we can work with the ELP department and find some dates that everyone's available and reconvene.
Thank you, Ms. Botticelli. And I think my last question for you, Mr. Barnes, the growth in charter school expenditure, am I correct in saying that that is the most significant growth that we have in our budget from this current school year to next school year?
Behind the contingency for provincial labor contract settlements.
So other than that budget line on labor contracts, it is the highest growth we're seeing from this year to next year?
Yes.
Thank you. That is all. Great work, Mr. Barnes, and great work, Mr. Pritchard.
Thank you.
Board Member Ann Rivera? You had your hand up? Okay, we'll have to get back to Ann. Someone at City Hall has their hand up. Mr. Hurd?
Yes. Thank you, Chairwoman Woods. And I just, a couple of questions. One question was, as I looked through this, our budget, and I looked at our Virtual Pathway program, why is it so much of a difference between the cost per pupil, the Virtual Pathway to our other programs? And also, if we're looking to go virtual, can we afford it in the coming years if more children decide to go virtual due to the extensive amount of cost it takes to run and operate the virtual program?
Looking at it now.
Go to the end. If you go to page 60, 63, 64, 65, all the way to 65. You can start at page 59. 59, it says 95,000 per pupil, $141.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hurd, I'm looking, where exactly on page 59 are you looking?
At the top, where it says per pupil.
Uh huh, 95,000?
Yes. And which, we look at other programming ranges about 12,000 to 13,000 per pupil.
If I can jump into, I have too many of those, so I shouldn't be responding to this, but that's like a, there's just so few people and their fixed costs associated with any school, so it's going to come up to a very high per pupil number.
Okay, so how many students are we looking at for 95,141 per pupil? And then as I go, one is 83,259, 74,357, and goes in as such, 52,527 per pupil.
Right now, we have five hubs across the city. I'm sorry, hello, everyone, this is Toya Wilson. I know finance can talk about the calculation, I can talk about the numbers at Pathways. So at Virtual Pathways, there are five different hubs, and at each hub, there are 30 students who are serviced. So you're talking about, you're talking about 150 students. So, but when you look at their budget, they are broken up across the five hub, or you really have to take those five hubs and put them together. We get a good sense for how they actually operate, because they are considered one school, and we have them broken up, just so we can understand where the hubs are and what's going on at each hub. As far as the calculation that comes out of finance, and I know that was being explained just a minute ago.
So are you saying that the 95,141 per pupil is a combined five pupils in that program? Or is this still per person?
No, I believe it's still per person, and there's 30 students assigned to each hub.
There's something unique about the Virtual Pathway programs and how they show the per pupil. And I will meet with Maria Wood tomorrow and provide you that answer or explanation.
Okay, as of right now, I just can't see how we can justify paying that much per person. And we also look into the coming years to extend our Virtual Pathway programs and remain in agreeing as we move forward, that kind of.
You know, to function when your rooms drop so much. I'll reach you that explanation with, sitting with Maria Wood tomorrow.
And also the actual amount of pupils that's in the program, along with our projection in the coming year, because I don't see a projection of what we're looking for. I see the 2023, but it doesn't give me.
Yeah, this is sort of a unique part of the, I'll get you that.
Can I have more information about, thank you.
That's the uniqueness of the program. They, so they receive students on an ongoing basis, and they receive a number of their students going into the next year. As we wrap up the year, going into the year, they carry over some students, but then they receive a number of students. So it ends up being 30 seats at each one of those hubs that we have available.
Ms. Wilson, is that what we're budgeted for, or is that what is actually enrolled?
That is what we're budgeted for.
Okay. Okay, I think Ms. Belton-Cotman has something to say about this issue. Sharon, can we recognize you? Your mic's not on, Sharon.
I'm sorry, thank you for bringing this up, Mr. Hurd. This is, if there's anything that needs to be adjusted and fixed this year, is what's going on with this Virtual Pathway. Okay, the principals have an opinion about how this can be done in a very efficient way. What you currently have are 30 students, and the teachers, as part of the teachers' list of students that should be attending these programs. They're not attending the programs, okay? And so as a result, we're paying handsomely for adults to sit in these seats and not have children in the seats. The principals have a, the high school principals have a definite opinion about how this program could be done in a better way that would benefit children inside the building, that would keep an on-flow of students moving in and out through this process, and keeping them moving and making sure that the graduation rate occurs. I am, I have, I have watched this program, and I started working this virtual piece back in 2011, okay? And I have watched this program turn into a cash cow. There's one other cash cow in this district, we're not getting there today. This one right here is a cash cow, and it needs to be looked at, and it needs to be revamped this year. We should not be paying adults for students who are not in the seats. It just does not make sense. We have to be more efficient, and we have to be more effective. If principals are saying that if you allow us some autonomy in this equation, we can make sure that the children who need the support are moved in, once they get where they need to be, they could be moved out. But they don't have any say whatsoever unless one of the administrators agree to work with them in the buildings. Other than that, we have children who are not attending these programs, and we're paying for them. This needs to be revamped. That is broken. This piece is broken, and we're not, we're not getting the results we need to get because it's not being properly worked, Madam Inter-Supervisor. And this needs to be fixed this budget cycle. Ask the principals their opinions, the high school principals, on how they can work this program and make it be more efficient and more effective and cost responsible. This is, this is, this is a situation where for real, some children aren't even allowed in the program. That's another conversation, okay? Why? Because the seats are already taken. The kids aren't coming, but the seats are already occupied. And based on the contract, we can't put more children in there because they already have, they're already listed. We need to really look at this. This is broken, broken, broken. And we have to fix this one this year. It's too much money going in here. Let's do the totals and take a look at it. You know, I am totally against the way this is currently being run. We can do it better. And to Mr. Hurd's point, what are we going to do if we want to add more children in? We can't, because they already have the seats already taken. It's just not fair to the children who need to, need to move forward and, who are struggling and who could use this boost. And these, I'm not knocking the instructors, the teachers, I feel that they're doing their job, but we really need to look at fixing this. This was previous people's baby, and it was a cash cow then, and it's a cash cow still to this day. Thank you.
So if I may, I want to address some of the concern. With Pathways, one of the things we changed just this year, we've been doing it for the full year and a portion of last year, is we've been looking at the seats quarterly and opening up seats quarterly and distributing them to schools. So when we do have that issue of students not performing at Pathways, you know, there's an issue, we look at, we can open up those seats, and then we distribute them quarterly out to the schools. So schools in high need get the first priority on those schools, or schools at our CSI schools, they get first priority at those seats, and it was significantly, it significantly impacted their graduation rates last year, those schools, so that's MST, that's Burgard, that's South Park, that's I-Prep. East High was also in that category last year. This year, we followed the same thing. It was one of the things we've changed just more recently. And we've also kicked off a committee to review all of the alternative programming, and Pathways is a huge part of that. Principals sit on that committee. We reached out to BCSA and asked for representation to make sure that we have that. And the idea is to have a plan that rolls out over two to three years to really look at what can we put in place next year and change immediately? What takes a little bit longer, but we want to put it in year two? What takes even longer, and we want to put it in year three? So we want to change some things immediately to address some of the concerns that you have brought up. But we've already made that adjustment to look at how we open up seats quarterly as much as possible.
I'm glad you've made the adjustment, but I still don't feel it's enough, because there are only four quarters, okay? And so that means that you can only rotate so many children through the system when we know we have a strong need in our high school for children to be, to receive additional supports. What is so hard about looking at the ideas that the principals have, okay, to make this program better? They're the ones who are inside these buildings. They're the ones who feel that there's a need to change this and to structure it a little bit differently. And when you look at, it's a legitimate situation. If you're looking at 357, and we're paying $95,000 per student, okay, there's a problem, okay? Because we're not doing it anywhere else. So does that mean that site needs to close, is my question? Because we, oh, I take that back, 358 is $81,000 per student. This is too expensive. It's too expensive to afford. We have to do something better than this. It's not working. It's just not. You may be getting your minimum results or whatever, but this is costing too much. This is not physically responsible. I'm sorry, it's just not. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you for that. So it sounds like we have a committee that's been convened, and the principals are a part of that committee, is that correct, Ms. Wilson?
Absolutely, principals are a part of it, teachers.
And they're telling me they don't have any say in how to change it, okay? So it's one thing to have them at the table, but if you already have your agenda already set. okay, and not interested in listening to the changes, it's not going to happen, Madam interim. Okay, we're not going to continue to pay eighty-five thousand dollars for a student. We're just not. So this has to be fixed before this budget goes forward, period to end. I don't know how you fix it, but eighty-one thousand and ninety-five thousand per student is not happening. It can't happen. We can't survive like that. We can't.
Okay, we have Terrence Hurd hand up, and then we have Dr. Kathy Evans Brown hand up. But I just want to say one thing before either of them say. This program, Virtual Learning, is supposed to be a method for us to get troubled students who are disrupting schools out of the classroom so they could do virtual learning and get supports without disrupting our school. So this program could be very important to school safety, to helping the students. We need to take a look at it and make it viable. So give us the opportunity to collect some information and get some information to the board on the program as far as enrollment, what's actually happening, the committee that has been put together, and we'll get some information to the board on that. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Hurd, and then Dr. Kathy Evans Brown.
Thank you, Board Member Belton Cotman. Some of the things that you said was was running through my mind, but I just want to give the district a chance to respond and to bring us some information on this. And I too I do agree that we need some movement on this before before the vote. So as I read this, does this whole program operate without any grants? It says zero percent grants. I was like, this whole program here operate without any grants monies available? I'm just trying to justify the the cost of it, and I thought maybe we have some outside sources or revenue coming in to support their pathway program. I know we I know we have a lot of organizations, outside organizations that that work with our troubled youth. I'd like to see what other monies that were detailed to justify the amount of money that we're spending.
It appears that there are no grants that are supporting it.
Okay, okay, I'll move on to my next topic. Thank you again, Mr. Barnes, and for giving the board some clarity in upcoming days. The next next question is, as we roll out our modified sports program and unified sports program, we know that we're going to have a presentation done real soon by our Athletic Department. And some of the things that has been proposed in it and talked about is we're going to develop new new sports fields at five or six elementary schools here in the city of Buffalo. And I raised a question during the board meeting last month, well, this month, you know, last month, about the monies that's supposed to have been earmarked for this program and whether it's going to fall under our capital budget or general budget, or if we can use our ESSER fund monies to help support this program. So I haven't seen in in our printout where that's allocated at.
Yeah. Board Member Hurd, I definitely have to get back to you on that, on the status, the budget submissions, and the potential funding sources. I'll get back to you very quickly on that.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I don't be be subjective, but that's the answer that we received at the board meeting that was supposed to have been rectified and put in put in numbers today for this meeting.
Okay.
I know you wasn't there, but.
I've seen the modified sports on a a list of outstanding items, and then the development of the new sports field. That one I got to get back to you on. And as you noted, capital ESSER, please just give me a chance. I'll get back to you very quickly.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Board Member Hurd, I stand corrected. If you look at the bottom of page fifty-nine where it says budget and budget percent, it does appear that there are some grants that do support the program. A Title I grant is listed, special education, and there's an ARP ESSER piece that's that's listed. So it looks like almost thirty percent of the program is supported through some of our district grants. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for that information. Terrence, do you have any other questions, or can we move on to Dr. Kathy Evans Brown?
No, no, thank you, Board Member Woods. I yield the floor. Back to you. Thank you.
Dr. Kathy Evans Brown, your questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on the conversation with Pathways. Thank you, Mr. Barnes, for a great presentation. You know, with the Pathways Academy, you know, my eyes struck that number as well. Very, very expensive. So I I think it's a good premise for the program because it offer opportunities for some of our more difficult young people. And yeah, I want the the district to take a look at it, to see where we can make some improvements. I think the program is needed, but I certainly think we need to, as a board, be realistic and and actually see what's happening, and let's look at, you know, the successes, you know, as well as where the improvements can take place because that is a low number of children and a high number of dollars that's being expended. So I'm I'm in agreement with all of my colleagues who have concerns about those numbers. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. I wanted to, it looks like we're going to actually be right on time. It's six oh four. I just wanted to commend the superintendent on some of the additional positions to support our legal department, our finance department, the transportation department, areas where we really do really did need another staff to manage and the budget department to manage the additional funds. There are a lot of good things in this budget, and I thank you for giving another opportunity next week. Thank you, Dr. Kathy Evans Brown, to go over the school-based budget. So I suggest strongly to each of the board members to look at your school-based budgets and discussions with your principals, and if there's any other items that they have not brought to the attention of the superintendent that there are concerns, please have them do so because that could be part of the equity piece to make sure this budget addresses any other lingering concerns to renovate education, expand services, and to address correction of the learning loss. I see, let's see, two hands up. Terrence and I'm not sure where the other person is. Oh, oh, okay, Terrence, I believe you were first, and then Board Member Cotman after that.
Okay, thank you. I just have one other question. Thank you, Inter superintendent Dr. Tajah Woods, for all the work that you're doing. It's very, very encouraging to see that we're moving in a great direction. Also, I just have one question about our our bus aides. How many are we projected to hire? If you have the information right now. If not, we can talk later. But we have one point eight million dollars budgeted for bus aides. It seemed like that that we have a substantial amount of bus aides that may have came to the district. So if you have a number or or just a little, what the work have you had done with that? And to have that much money dedicated for bus aides, I really, really commend you and that hope we can get this the problems resolved.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Holly McGee.
Thank you, Superintendent. Hello, Board Member Hurd. Thank you for that question. We're excited to announce that we had several candidates come out and participate in our recruitment event last month, well, actually in March, for our bus aid event. And to date, from the beginning of the year to now, we have eighty-eight bus aides that have been hired. As you know, there is a process. Yes, yes, but we're excited about that. But we're not only excited about the eighty-eight, but we're excited that it's an ongoing process. We don't stop. You know, we haven't quit. We're continuing to hire bus aides until the end of the school year. So if individuals are interested in becoming bus aides, we're not turning them away. We're letting them know we're going to onboard them and hire them to the very last drop. And even if they are not assigned to a route right away for at the end of this school year, they know that they have a job for next year. So we're ongoing, bringing them in. We're taking and looking at all of the applicants in applicant stack. That's our platform that we use to bring individuals in, and they can apply for the positions. We're looking at them regularly and reaching out to them, calling them, contacting them, and asking them to come in and provide their necessary documentation to the Civil Service Department so that we can get them intern on our buses. So we're really, really excited about the people that have come out in the community. Thank you to the board members that also advertised our board, our bus aid events. Mr. Scott, he put it he put it on Facebook, and it was just incredible. So and Mr. Hurd, you did that as well. I don't want to name individuals individually. Ms. Cotman, she regularly lets me know this person applied. Tammy pulled his application. So I appreciate that. I don't feel any pressure with that. I encourage that. Please, we don't want to leave anyone left behind. We want all of the individuals in the community in the city of Buffalo that are interested in becoming bus aides with us to apply and to get qualified, accepted, and approved by Civil Service and on our buses with our kids. We've heard the community. I've been at some of the listening tours with Dr. Williams. Primarily, that has been the focus of what the community has said, that they want to have bus aides on all of the buses. So that has been a primary focus for many of our Civil Service team members. You will hopefully see that reflected in some of the board changes. Of course, you guys do know that it is a process. Civil Service upstairs with the city of Buffalo has been extremely cooperative. President Petrucci has pulled out his connects and has said, you know, what can I do to fast track and get the background checks done for you? He has done that, and we appreciate that. Thank you, President Petrucci, for that. And people, the turnaround is really fast. Dr. Williams has given me an assignment, and that assignment is to make sure that these people are turned around within two weeks. So I have my staff calling people when they don't get their fingerprints done timely. They fill out an application. They give us all their paperwork. Once they're cleared from Civil Service, then they go and get their fingerprints. And then some may delay that. We are we have our team going in, giving call and saying, where are your fingerprints? We're looking and teach. You haven't gone to get your fingerprints. And don't forget, with the bus aides and the food service workers, the fingerprints are provided for and paid for by the district. So they do not have to come out of their pocket for that. So we express to them that it's very important that they're in the industry. We're reinvesting in them, and we want them to go ahead and get those fingerprints done. So we are hopeful that we are going to have our buses full with bus aides.
We will have all of our buses full with bus aides. I'm confident of that. That's a priority. And as you just heard from our chief of human resources, we're not waiting for them to come to us. We're going to them. We're doing innovative things, posting it on social media, going to churches. When we go to festivals, when we're doing parades, I'll have information to hand out to folks who may be present there on how they can go to the website and get fast tracked and get hired. So we will have bus aides on all of our buses. That I'm confident of.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you so much for all your hard work. I'm sorry, I thought I said the first. Thank you for your hard work. We appreciate it. I know the community appreciates it, and our children do. Thank you. Thank you again for your leadership on Dr. Tajah Woods.
Board Member Chairwoman Cotman next.
So thank you. I also would like to give a shout out to the mayor in regards to helping us with the Civil Service Department. Mayor Brown, yes, he deserves that. He he has stepped in, and he put pressure on his people to help us with the security officers as well as the bus aides and and that Civil Service Department. And he I had a conversation with him today. He is very interested in making sure that we that his his the city helps us move to the next level. With the transportation in mind, I'm concerned if we're hiring bus aides, do they get paid for a twelve-month salary? Or are they just paid for when they're on the buses?
They are paid when they are on the buses.
Okay, and so we always have, it appears, a lag or something when we are when we start the school year because they've taken jobs over the summer. Okay, I'm wondering if we can start looking into the possibility of utilizing some of these people in summer in certain things that we do over the summer. I mean, to try to keep some of them employed and try to keep some money moving forward for them. But my other issue is the transportation piece. We have not heard any update. We have not. We already realize now that we have a transportation problem. I personally wrote a resolution that did not move forward. Okay, but but I was under the understanding that there was going to be a survey, that there was going to be actions put in place so that we could be in the position to do some of what other districts have done in the to make sure that parents are able to get their children to school. And I haven't heard anything up anymore about that. And so I'm concerned about that. I would appreciate if educational support to look into that piece so that we can have an idea on what's being done in regards to transportation. The other piece, is it at all possible to also pay for the security officers to be fingerprinted? We are at a point where we need them. It's a hundred and one dollars per person. And if that's interfering with someone getting to the next level, can we consider that as an option? Okay, because we need to make sure we have these people in place. All right, if you're doing it for the bus aides, maybe we can do it for them as well, since we have a shortage.
I would defer to Mr. Kuzma on that only because there's a union. This is a union environment, and we want to make sure that everyone is treated equitably. So, Mr. Kuzma, would you like to respond?
No, I mean, that's a it's a negotiable term. You know, we're in the midst of negotiations with Pecta right now, you know, and can can discuss the issue. I mean, I think Tammy raises the point of, you know, we have to understand there's four hundred you know, five hundred budgeted positions for Pecta. You know, usually what's good for the goose is good for the gander, but we can discuss it and and see if we can narrow the scope of it a little bit. It's a good suggestion. We'll we'll have that conversation with them.
Well, thank you, but I'm not asking that you do it forever and forever. I'm just.
I hear what you said, and I think you're loud and clear, and I know there are many ways to slice.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Anything on transportation?
Yeah, we we have concluded that survey, and I do think it would be a wise idea at a future work session, whether that's in May or June. I would suggest June to have a transportation update and include that as well as what else we are working on. So I will be prepared to present that data and where we're where we're going.
Thank you. I believe Board Member McCosey has her hand up.
Thank you, Chairwoman Woods. The the piece to Board Member Cotman's point, the bus aides will be available for the transportation for our summer programs, correct?
Yeah, we do hire we do hire a cohort of bus aides for our summer programming. And it's, you know, typically, we I I don't I'll check with Cheryl, but usually I don't think we find as many as we would like during the summer. I think that there's more opportunity than there is those that are interested in it. So I I can confirm that, but I do know we do certainly hire bus aides to be on our buses during the summer.
And just to be clear for folks, the bus aides can there is there any overlap that they can possibly be like lunch aids or for breakfast or lunch duties for since we offer both of those during summer months as well? Just so, you know, folks can maintain some income throughout the summer and maybe not take on additional jobs? I don't know if you can, you know, put them in other roles. I think we discussed this before, but I did just get some text messages just now about that. I think we discussed this before, but I did just get some text messages just now about that as to whether bus aids can kind of double as, you know, aids or support throughout the school day during the summer school program.
Are those different? The bus aids?
Yes.
They're different unions?
They are different unions, but, you know, so the summer, summer aid assignments are given and issued based on seniority. And so your time with the district. So that's what we have to take into consideration when individuals are applying for the summer aid positions. But we have had throughout the school year. So I can think of many situations where there has been teacher aides that have worked at teacher, as teacher aides through the school day. And then at the end of the day, they are bus aids. So they have taken on a couple of different roles in the district. So it's not something that would be a conflict of interest for them to have both positions with the district to supplement their income. So we encourage that, but we just, you know, they must work with their building principal to make sure that it does not interfere with their essential functions of their job as their primary role as an aide, as they need to go on to the bus aid. You know, it just has to be perfect timing. And if it works, if it works out with the building principal and that employee, we have had several circumstances where people work in both roles.
Yeah.
You know, people need to supplement their income.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add, we're always looking for how to kind of cross, cross utilize folks. Board Member McCosey, the, you know, teacher aides and assistants are a little bit easier. With bus aids though, you know, they usually, especially during the regular school year, have the two routes they're on in the morning, the early and the late route. And then the late, and then the early and the late route again in the afternoon. You know, so from a practical standpoint, it's hard for them to just stop off at a school and get picked up because then we're losing that bus aid off of, off of another run where we need them. So it, it's usually a little bit harder logistically to, to utilize them at the school level. But I'll, I'll talk it over with, with Tammy and Cheryl and see if there's any ideas during the summer where we, we may not have the duplicate, you know, those, those layered routes in the morning and the afternoon where we can utilize them a little bit differently.
So the text I just received basically is asking, do these bus aids then have the autonomy to at least open up the conversation with their principals based on what was just said? So they can go and ask their principals if it's a possibility?
They would need to, excuse me, Ms. Board Member McCosey, they would need to not only talk to their principal, they would also need to apply. You know, make sure they apply for the position. They've already been cleared, so that's a great thing. So that takes one layer off. But they need to communicate with their principal, also apply, and make sure that it works logistically so that it doesn't interfere with one or the other's duties. You know, these are two different unions and we want to make sure that one isn't being flighted with the essential functions of their job so that they're doing their job 100, 100% full capacity at one end, 100 full capacity at the other, and that there's no conflict. But I have seen it happen and it has happened in the district. What we want to do is make sure that people are able to feed and be able to sustain their families. So if it takes for them to have two jobs with us, we will try to make it happen, but as long as it doesn't cause a conflict.
Thank you, no, thank you for clarifying. I, I appreciate it. It sounds a little repetitive, but folks needed a little more clarity.
No, I, I understand, no problem.
Okay, I don't see any other, let's see, is that you still up, Jen? Okay, okay, I don't see any other hand. 620, Jennifer, I just wanted to mention that in the questions I submitted, you should note there's a $1.6 million increase in textbook and supplies for Ls. I think that'll make you smile.
Just did.
Okay, if there's no other questions, then this would conclude the finance and operations work session. And I'll turn it over to Ann. And again, thank you to each of the staff members for your excellent answers. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for your excellent draft budget. And that concludes my committee. I get to turn it to Ann.
Thank you very much, Ms. Woods. So this is the opening of the executive affairs work session. I'd like to make sure that there's no objections to adding an agenda item that would be placed after the resolution, the discussion of the resolution, to name the parent room at Dr. Lydia T. Wright School of Excellence 89 in honor of Dorothy Mother Gray. We, I, I had the request to put on it, on our agenda, a discussion regarding the initiative to lower the number of signatures to advance to candidacy for the school board. Are there any objections to making that an item for tonight? Okay, hearing no objections, we'll go ahead. So the first item that we're, we're working with tonight is on the resolution. Before we go to that, I'd like to give Dr. Williams the opportunity to make any remarks if she has any.
Sure, I just want to say, in regards to the resolution for Mother Gray, who I knew personally, I don't know if you've ever met her. Her smile and her goodness and her commitment to Buffalo Public Schools just radiated from the inside out. It seemed almost every parent meeting that I went to, you know, I could count on her being there. And I know she was very involved at, you know, the point that I met her in her life with her grandchildren and making sure that they had everything they needed. But, you know, she was the kind of person that it wasn't just about her grandchildren. It was about all Buffalo Public School children. She supported this district for many years. She's a graduate, I think, from, I don't know, I think East High School she went to. So she's been committed to Buffalo Public Schools for a long time. She was a great lady. She has such wisdom. And again, she always supported our school district. I, you know, pray she's resting in peace and I, I just wanted to share that about her. She's a great lady.
Thank you so much. I have to say, when Ms. Belt and Cotton requested that this get put on the executive affairs work agenda, it was a joyful item. So I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Belt and Cotton to make a brief presentation for us, share any information she may have.
So I did not require the principal or the assistant principal or anyone from the building to come to our committee meeting. However, they will be present if the board should move forward at our board meeting. I had a brief opportunity to work with Mother Gray, but I, I feel that superintendent has already paid honor to her in a very big way. She not only worked with Dr. Williams, but she's worked with Dr. Reynolds at Martin Luther King School. She's at, has been at the Lydia T. Wright School of Excellence. And she's gave 40 years plus of her life to Buffalo Public Schools. And what they would like to do is name the parent room in honor of her. And they have been working, they had their community meeting. They did their petitioning. They listed the notification in the public news. And they followed every step and they are moving forward to ask the board if we would consider allowing a resolution to be submitted in our package for this month and that the board would vote on it and they will have, honor her at the beginning of next month, which is in June. People have already started donating things to the room to try to spruce it up. And a lot of love and just would like to respect the community and their wishes to do this. Madam Chair.
I wholeheartedly agree. I'll open it up for any discussion, comments, or questions, if there are any from our board members. Thank you, Ms. Belt and Cotton. I have your, your comments now. Dr. Evans Brown, did you have any? Thank you.
No, no questions. I agree with it and no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jack?
Questions?
Okay, thank you. Ms. McCosey?
No questions. I fully support this.
Mr. Scott?
Fully support it. I don't, I knew Ms. Gray, didn't know her very well, but just one of those faces of BPS, just always warm and welcoming. So fully supports moving this forward.
Thank you. And Ms. Woods?
I also fully support it. She's a wonderful person. She deserves the honor.
Absolutely. It's nice to see the board in agreement and certainly her presence in BPS will be missed, but a lasting legacy of the work and the, the contribution she made is very appropriate, I think. So with that, if there's nothing else, we can move on to the next agenda item. Thank you, Ms. Belt and Cotton, for bringing this forward. I think the board is looking forward to voting on this at our next board meeting. Okay, so our next agenda item that's up is about the legislative bill. We have been requested, let me try that again. It's been a long day, I'm sorry. Legislative bill, lower signatures, petition signatures for school board candidates. We've been asked to give our feedback and opinion on this. So I'd like to take a minute to lay this out on the table, the things to consider, and then I'll go ahead, as I usually do, and move through our colleagues in terms of questions and comments. So right now, what's proposed in the bill is reducing the number of signatures for district representatives from 500 to 200, and correct me if I missed anything, and from 1,000 to 400. I looked at the bill really, really quickly. The idea is to lower the petitioning in order to increase the number of candidates running for school boards. And I think from my position on this, and I'm just going to put this out here for consideration, is there's two, there's a couple major questions with this. First of all, is the petitioning that candidates have to undergo now unduly burdens them and a barrier to access for good, strong candidates who will support public education? And the other piece to this is, to what extent do the petitions represent community support and community connections for public school board members? Well, I think those are some things to think about other than to just reinforce what I know my colleagues believe, which is that what we want is the best representation for our public schools and for our students. So with that, I'd like to open up to discuss what we, how we're feeling as a board and then we can report back. Ms. Belt and Cotton, you're at the top of the list. I, and I will go around, I'll reverse it, no worries.
So from my perspective, I, I, I am very careful to say what I'm saying because I need it to be clearly understood that whatever requirement it takes, in my opinion, if you are committed to being on the board, you will do. Okay, my concern with this is, is that this plays into a narrative that is happening nationally in regards to school boards and things that are happening on urban school boards. And so I will agree to do whatever the board agrees to. I will report back in agreement with whatever the board. But for me, if it's required, it's a requirement, it's a requirement. I am concerned, however, that with the recent changes, that we are really in the process of, of, of really forming a chaotic situation in regards to opportunity for the school board. So I don't really, you know, have an opinion either way. Personally, I was surprised that it was even moved forward. The people who were moving it forward, it does not surprise me that they are moving it forward as far as within the community because they have been the pro charter people and it is, it is their goal to turn this district over. I will say that with the election being moved to the general election, that this could make it easier for people who are not associated with a party to receive signatures, but the opposite could be true as well. So that's all I really have to say on the subject. I do not want to go against our legislators who are working to try to remedy some things and I'm respectful of that. And so that's why I'm, you know, I'm on the fence with it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Dr. Evans Brown?
Well, I'm certainly not clear as to when this is supposed to take place. Is this something futuristic or is it something that needs to happen this time around for those of us who are collecting petition signatures, for example? I'm sort of aligning with what Sharon said. I could envision chaos, meaning that anybody off the street can get 100 signatures and call it a day. What is their motive? Or 200? What would be their motive? You know, a job like this, when you talk about young, you know, we're talking about our future here. We're talking about 30,000 plus students who need people who are passionate about their future because we're going to get old and we need somebody to take care of us, who are smart, who get a great education. And I can sit back, or we can sit back and say, okay, the world is in good hands. So let's not make a mockery out of it when we talk about two signatures. I think some of us can get 200 signatures when our eyes close. So I'm not sure where this is going and why it is happening, but there is a narrative and there's a reason why it's happening. That's my take on it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hurd, you're up.
To be clear, can you just repeat the question? I heard what you said, but specifically what your question is.
We have been asked by the Big Five School District. It's in our email as well. Dr. Evans Brown sent it, a request to President Petrucci. So the, there is a bill on the table in New York State Assembly that is proposing that for the city of Buffalo, we lower the number of required petition signatures from 500 to 200 for district seats, from 1,000 to 400 for at-large seats. And we have been requested to, we've just been asked about our feedback and our opinion from the Big Five. That is what we're doing now.
Okay, to answer it, from 1,000 to 400, 4,000, 1,000 to 400 at, at large. I'm at large member, I can speak on behalf of at large. I know that the district board members are, are running right now and, and getting, getting signatures right now and others that's, that's running against them also. To, to lower the standards of this, personally, I, I believe that, that, that there is a entity that's working against public schools out there that's trying to set a new standard for signatures and elections here in the state of New York. And I'm not too sure where they're coming from lobbyists or if they're coming from certain individuals or certain groups. But I, I know the consensus is that trying to get more people to be able to run for positions and making it easier. Now, there's a couple of other things that's, that's at play also that I see with the signature would be the start date and end date because I know that when we ran for the board members, we were out in the snow collecting signatures. There was snowstorms and hailstorms going on and we was knocking door to door. So I'm more concerned about the dates and times where signatures could be collected that make it more affordable for people, especially how the system is set up that older people have to run because younger people who work a, a full-time job can't sustain their projections running for a school board when, when, when it's not afforded to them because the school board doesn't pay anything. Well, it pays by the small stipend, you know, for all the work that each and every individual that's here represented does. So that's, that's one of my concerns that that should be added to this amendment. And also, I believe I had about seven times more signatures than I needed, but that, that was due to the work of a lot of people and due to work of, of a very good support and everybody doesn't have that type of support. So I, I truly believe that we need to, it needs to be addressed, but as, as Ms. Belt and Cotton stated a little earlier, is that we look, what I think she was getting to was like the party lines. earlier, is that we look, what I think she was getting to was like the party lines, looking at two people, we had to vote down the line, and people do go to people's doors with petitions. And what they do, they actually sign a petition, they sell it, they got a petition underneath, another petition underneath, another petition underneath that. If you like, this person signed all leads for this person's support, this group, which is going to make us, take us away from that bipartisan position and make us partisan. So there's some other things that need to be addressed in this. I'm going to stop and leave my comment right there. But it's more factors to this that has to be looked into before I, myself personally, can actually just make a decision on it.
Okay. So for my own thoughts, you would like more information and can't, don't have a firm opinion on the lowering the signatures? Did I understand that correctly?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
But that's half of it. But the other half is, is the delay in timing and that we need to really look at what date it's going to be on. This is just the final day has been moved, you know, that's out of our control. And it's also, is what the people want. Do a survey of what the people want and how they feel it should move forward. And no, it's up to this community. We work for the community. So the community has to have that input also.
Okay. It's on the table from the assembly. So there's, there's that piece as well. Ms. Belton Cotman, is it quick?
Yeah, I need to say this. This is to go into effect immediately to answer Dr. Evans Brown. And this is, and you have it in your mail, your email, what the bill is. It is not something that you're going to add on and negotiate. It's already on the table. Okay. So the issue is what does Buffalo Public Schools think is still going to move forward, I believe, either way. But we have just our opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. Ms. Jay?
So my brief feedback on this is that I am supportive of the democratic process. Getting petition signatures simply is part of that process so that candidates can get on the ballot. And if it's going to allow more people to get on the ballot and give the community and the public options of people to vote for, it's the votes that count, not how many people actually make it on the ballot. I think it's part of our democratic process to give people an opportunity to have different candidates on the ballot and then use their right to vote. So I am in support of it.
Thank you. Ms. McCossey?
I'm, I'm along the lines of agreeing with Board Member Cotman in a sense that as a current candidate with multiple opponents out there petitioning as we speak, I feel like I'm on the fence. I feel like there's a, you're making, you're trying to put forth or make us decide on something that obviously has undertones that's not being addressed. So if the undertones aren't being addressed, then how democratic and fair is it? And there's just, to me, there's so much moving, so many moving parts, and I'm kind of tired of the statement that, you know, it's just politics and this is how it works. Like, here's an opportunity to get our opinion and how we really feel. And if we can't address kind of the, you know, just the concerns that are on the table before, we already know, you know, we already know what's going to happen. They're going to make a decision anyway. But my opinion is, is I truly can't have an opinion, because there's too many things that, there's, there's too many underlying, again, underlying, like, kind of concerns at play here. So for me, being a candidate with multiple opponents, and this happening as we speak, I feel like it's not even fair for me to answer that question, let alone come up with an opinion.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to insert myself in the process, just so I can get my opinion there too, and I don't override anybody else's at this point. So in, I just want to make a statement to start with. In general, I favor ballot access. Just in general, I favor ballot access. Ballot access is important part of the democratic process. I have concerns about the timing of this, as several of you have expressed. And it's difficult for me to foresee what those ramifications are at this point. I think Ms. Belton Cotman laid it out, on the one hand, Ms. McCossey laid it out too. On the one hand, we have the potential here to, to allow for a process where more people can be on the ballot, more people are engaged, more people can be a part of becoming a school board member. But on the, on the other, and as Ms. Jay pointed out, you know, community representation has to do with the election process. Those who are elected have connected with their communities. Not as concerned about that. I am concerned about the timing of it, that's happening right now, and how that's going to roll out. And I'm afraid that I need to reserve judgment on this one. I don't feel really comfortable saying one way or another. Thank you for your, thank you for letting me go before you. Mr. Scott, you are up.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. I'm actually, after hearing other board members feeling similar as you, Dr. Rivera, and I would like us to consider potentially not taking any action or sharing any opinion, saying that we're just going to not voice a recommendation on this matter. Like it's been stated, this is going to move forward regardless. I'd like to take us back to when the state, our state representatives introduced legislation on changing the date of the election. They never came to us to talk to us about that. We passed a resolution in opposition of that, and that resolution was ignored. And I think it needs to be clear with the public that, with us discussing this now, it's not our legislators that are coming to us asking for our feedback. It's the Conference of Big Five that represents us in Albany. The other thing that I need to also raise is that there are other bills that, in my opinion, are far more urgent to Buffalo Public Schools and our children and our families. One being in the Assembly and in the Senate, from our, two of our local representatives, a moratorium on charter schools in Buffalo. We just had a budget discussion where it was shared clearly that one of the highest, second highest growth in expenditures is from this budget to next year's budget is in charter schools. Over 25% of our students now are in charter schools, which is far higher than New York City, which is capped at 11%. I also have, I raised it in the email, I think it's very problematic for this to be introduced, passed, and implemented in the middle of the process. When candidates have declared, candidates are collecting signatures, I think it's highly problematic. And it would surprise me that it would happen. And it makes me suspicious that it would be imposed in that manner. Now, with that said, similar to what Mr. Hurd said, I think there, this is an opportunity for us to gain more community input, if this was being done properly and including the community, because I think there is something to be said for having more access to a ballot, having more candidates that are interested be able to run for school board. And it is a challenge to gain all of those signatures, especially for at-large, 1,000, I believe it's more than some of the city elected officials and some Erie County legislators as well. So it certainly needs to change. It's how it's being changed. I think that's problematic. And I would like us to consider potentially not taking really a clear stance and just kind of staying out of it at this point.
Thank you. And Ms. Woods? Do you have a comment?
Well, this one's a no-win. If you say, great, cut it down to 200, you're self-serving, you got a conflict of interest. I already have over 200 signatures, so it ain't helping me either way. If you say, no, keep it at 500, which all of us have already proven we can get, because we had to get that before, then the thing is, they're going to say you're blocking all these highly motivated, polarized people. I have been out getting signatures, and there was a march of people who were, they called themselves pro-life, and they, they don't want people to have abortions. And they're very mobilized that they don't want, they want certain things taught in the schools, and they have strong positions. There's also a movement going on right now that governors are saying you can't say the word gay. I mean, this society has gotten so polarized, that if you put the, the signatures down to 200, I don't know if we're going to get serious educational board members, or we're going to get anon-type people. I, I've been running into some very interesting people during this gathering signatures. So I think it's going to be very polarizing to set only 200 signatures for, I also have opponents, and, you know, now they don't have to get 500 like I did. They're going to be able to just get 200. It'll be very difficult. It's going to open up access to a lot of people who may or may not be serious about education. They may just have angles as either pro-charter or pro-whatever. So I am very torn on this. So I agree. I won't, I can't take a position, because there's no winning in this.
Good. Ms. Belton Cotman, does that fulfill the request? We need to, we need to, in general, what it sounds like is the, the will of the board is to reserve judgment on this, although we do have few, we do have some concerns, potential concerns with it.
Certainly, I'll convey that. Thank you for your feedback. I think what I really hear said is that if you're going to involve the Board of Education, why not have a conversation with us also, out of just being respected. But, you know, I hear that loud and clear. And so I, I will convey that ASAP, which is what I've been asked to do this evening. And we will let the chips fall where they may.
I think it would be fair to say to the Big Five too, thank you for asking us.
Well, the Big Five is clear that they represent us. They are our lobbying organization, and they do not want to be in a position that they have not gotten approval from the board to do so. So I respect that and I appreciate.
Yeah.
And I agree, Ms. Bellton Cotman, that I highly respect that as well, for them to reach out to us and want our valuable input. So I appreciate it too.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was helpful. Okay. So if we are good with that item, we can move to the next item. We good? Okay. So the next is to have a motion. So may I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment and employment history of a specific board employee and for the purpose of receiving legal advice?
Motion.
Okay, in a second. All in favor, please show hands. Okay, I got you all. Opposed? Stayed? Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, we, the board is going to go into an executive session.
Head up to the board off, or board room. I'll be up there in a few minutes.
In executive session to discuss the employment and employment history of a specific board employee and for the purpose of receiving legal advice, and no action was taken. I would also like to make mention that President Patrucci asked to be excused from the session, work session tonight. Is there any other items that we need to consider before we close our meeting for this evening?
No, no, I'm with the other panel. No.
I think we're all set. We're good. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
See you Friday.
See you Friday. Thank you.
That too.
Great, great, great.
Thank you, Friday.